Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Here.
And Mayor Canning.
Here. If you've not already done so, please silence or turn your cellphones to vibrate. And now all please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 54.3. Also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take any action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. And as a reminder, under Rosenberg's Rules of Order, it's been the practice of this council not to allow the allotment of one person's time to another. So your time is three minutes per person regardless of the topic. I have two speaker cards. We'll start with those, and then anyone else wishing to address the council under oral communication is welcome to do so. First card is from Lana Richardson. Lana, should you so choose, but you're not required, please share your name, which I've done, and your address, which I have not done.
Still Lana Richardson, 61 Vista.
Thank you.
And this may be an agenda item in some regard. I wasn't sure. The public safety is what I wanted to talk about, part of it specific to the PSPS and part of it just in general. I have created a website, calistogapublicsafety.com, and on that website I'm posting notices of red flag warnings, the shutdown, and keeping it updated, and has links to PG&E weather maps and saying what the current status is. So that's just a point of information for you. But under the public safety part, a part of it is during the shutdown, and if there's a better time to address this, I can defer it until that comes on to the agenda. But I know that there was a lot of effort put into powering specific areas, one being the elementary school, so that the kids would still be in school. But directly behind that, or next door to it, is the Cedars Care Home, which was not powered. And I think that that being a very vulnerable population should be considered as an area that would be powered. And if you can do it so address specific as to include the school, it would seem that they would have the ability to include the building next door to it. So that was one of my concerns. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be addressing PSPS shortly. But relative to the elementary school, which was supposed to be, or is supposed to be, according to PG&E, and it's not actually PG&E, it's the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, in conjunction with CAL FIRE, who determines what is a Tier One, what is a Tier Two, and what is a Tier Three. Under that, and an exception was made for the elementary school as a critical facility, that was to be the only building on the west side of the river that was to receive power. And if you look outside in front of the elementary school, right at their driveway just next to the bridge, PG&E over the summer did an incredible amount of work that you'll see on new transformers, a higher pole, new wires, et cetera, to accommodate that school. Yes, absolutely. The Cedar Care Home, which is adjacent, one would imagine logically you should be able to do that. But we are doing this exception by exception, building by building, and we are kind of at the mercy of a little bit of CPUC, well, a lot of CPUC and CAL FIRE. There were, it is our understanding, a couple of residences on Cedar Street that may have been powered as well as a result of how they may be wired off of the elementary school property, which is a whole different question, because maybe the elementary school's paying their electric bill and they don't know it. So, but certainly a point made, and Cedar is one of the critical facilities that we have identified with PG&E. They have our list, as well as some communities further up on that side of Rancho being one of them. And they are working to accommodate some of these as best they can, but some of them very candidly will not be accommodated unless the CPUC modifies their map.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you for the comments. And when we get to the PSPS discussion, I may have more.
Sure.
To submit.
Thank you very much. The next speaker card I have is Betsy Kane Hartnett. Hello, Betsy.
Hello, Mayor. I am glad to follow Lana with issues about safety, because I'm concerned about that too. So I am Betsy Kane Hartnett. I live at 2880 Foothill Boulevard with my husband, John, commonly known as White Lane. It is a quiet residential street on the outskirts of town, just north of the Yellow Rose property, which is, guess what, what I want to talk about. We are truly concerned about the True Life Company's current proposed development of this property. I've been told that they will be submitting a new proposal in the coming days, and as much as I'd love to believe that all my concerns will be put to rest, in case they're not, I'd like you to hear them now. First and foremost, the safety issue. I'm worried about future emergency evacuations, not to mention traffic in general, given that the proposed development has both means of aggress ultimately spilling out onto Foothill Boulevard. The other day, and I sent you a picture, a minor traffic accident at the Petrified Forest Foothill Interchange. It had southbound traffic so backed up that we couldn't exit White Lane. And I truly lose sleep at night worrying about what would happen if hundreds of more cars are put at that spot. How could we ever make a left? We bought our home in 2000. We've continued to make upgrades to the house and property based on the assumption that we live in a rural residential neighborhood with one acre zoning. Clearly, the value of our property is not of concern to others in this room. I get that. But I know that the traffic situation is, as is the threat to Calistoga's charming small-town character. The first stated goal of the land use section of the general plan is to protect the small-town qualities of Calistoga, which include walkability, vineyards, orchards, natural habitats, and open space. And then the land use section goes on to say lands designated rural residential serve as a buffer between the agricultural lands around the city and the urbanized part of Calistoga. If your goal is to find suitable locations for workforce housing, or affordable housing, or whatever the issue is, I really implore you to look at the already urbanized parts of the city, not Yellow Rose with its vineyards, orchards, natural habitats, and open space.
You have 15 seconds. 15 seconds.
Which is at the heart of one of our most scenic entry corridors. Mic drop.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Your point is made and heard about the traffic, but just as a clarification, because you did send us a photo of that traffic on that day, that traffic was related to a significant construction project that was undertaken by PG&E. That caught me in it for 40 minutes, so, thank you. All right, I have another speaker card, David Ross. Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is David Ross. I live at 51 Los Feliz in Rancho de Calistoga. Up until four days ago, I was the newest member of the Rancho, but I no longer hold that title. I'm recently from Alameda, and again, my concern, as was the previous speaker, of the Yellow Rose Ranch project. I'm a known entity in the city of Alameda, the mayor, everybody knows who I am, the planning board knows who I am, and for full disclosure, I work for organized labor. The biggest concern I have regarding the Rancho is that they will, in all likelihood, get it through planning, get it to this august body, and then not develop it. Of the three major projects in Alameda that are housing, two of them by the Tim Lewis Company, one the Del Monte, one the Ensignal Terminals, and the third would be the Alameda Marina, all of those projects are entitled, and all of them are for sale. They're not going to be built the way they were planned. Has anybody actually looked at the track record of True Life? And that is your moral responsibility as representative of the city of Alameda. Tim Lewis has never built a project the size of the Ensignal Terminals. They're home builders from Sacramento. The company that's proposing to build the Alameda, this is 4,900 housing units, ladies and gentlemen, 4,900, not 400. The project at Ensignal Terminals that is now before the city, it's already entitled, the city can't do much about, is not the project that the planning board approved in 2014. By no str- they've added 100 and some odd housing units, they took away the 30,000 square feet of commercial. You no longer get a parking spot if you buy in. It's managed parking, because banks don't want to finance parking, it's not the best and highest usage square footage. And if, in fact, True Life has that intention, you need to find out what they're going to do, because it is simply not fair to anybody in Calistoga to have a project, get to what's known as entitled, and then not have it be built. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to town. Mr. McVale. McFale, excuse me. I should know better.
You don't want to know about my childhood with a name like that. I've got two young kids, and we've been going up and down the bike path. I think the bike path is a great thing for Calistoga. It's been a very formative part of their lives to be able to come into town, and I see a lot of local people using it, a lot of families walking up and down, a lot of visitors now traveling up and down that bike path. So it's a really cool thing. It seems trivial compared to some of the comments that have been made already, but I would like to maybe make a suggestion that that area on the left-hand side where the Public Works area is, just as you enter the bike path, it would be super nice, I think, for our visitors, especially if at some point we could screen that. It's, it is what it is, but I don't think a fence would be a huge amount of money, and you could certainly still get access into the area and dump off all the things that need to be dumped off there. But I think it would make a really nice impression for our visitors if they entered that bike path, and it wasn't the first thing they saw on their left-hand side. It's a small thing, but I think a small town is made up of a lot of small things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So noted, City Manager. I actually have someone from Public Works here. So noted, Public Works. Thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item or a consent calendar item? All right, not seeing any movement toward the lectern, I will close oral communication, and will entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda as presented unless a modification is requested. So moved. Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
The only thing I have to say is that a few days ago, I met with a few residents on the Chateau Mobile Home Park, Mobile Hall Park, and the topic was about the dog park. It was led by Mr. Scott Atkinson and a few other residents. They had questions and concerns about the dog park. So my suggestion to them was that in order for us to, you know, to work on that, they should have a committee, a formal committee made, and had a whole plan of what they want to see, so that way we can, you know, help them, because we cannot just share a bunch of ideas and not have a formal plan. So I understand that they did, and hopefully, you know, in the future, we can just work with them and accommodate that. So that was it.
I appreciate that, and I believe some concerned residents or citizens regarding the dog park have met with the city manager. I would like to address this topic for a brief moment, which I have in the past. The original dog park was placed on the location, its previous location. Well noted, well publicized that it was a temporary situation, an anticipation of something else being built there. That something else was the Boys and Girls Club, which I think we could all agree serves a higher and better use for that particular facility because of its location. The dog park was given a tremendous amount of assistance, both financial and work in kind, to relocate. It's been a few years since that relocation and that accommodation. I can appreciate, being a dog owner myself, the concern that now that that facility has been deemed for a higher and better use in public purpose regarding public safety as being a generator-receiving station, which I still believe can be dual-use for certain times of the year. I think the city has gone to great lengths to accommodate. I certainly think there is a need for a dog park, but to your point, there has to be a give and take on that, and the city, in my very strong opinion, has given quite a bit. So for the folks who are most interested in that, you've had three years to figure it out. We're happy to help you continue that, but to portray, and this isn't to your comments, but in other emails I've seen and a website I've seen, to portray the city as not caring, not participating, not interested, is a very unfair characterization. So if that's what you want, engage. Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Williams.
Yes, I also met with some folks who are interested in the dog park, and there was no sense of antagonism. They were looking forward to working with the city again. There are different folks involved from before, and so they're enthusiastic, and they're energetic, and they're interested, and so I encourage them, as Councilmember I listed, to organize, present their ideas, and we would accommodate, the city would accommodate as well as we could. So they're a positive force in the community, and I encourage them.
That we appreciate. All right. Councilmember Kraus.
Yes, I will have some comments on the public safety power shutdown. I understand that the city manager is going to make a presentation with some of the department heads here on what went on from the city's government's perspective during that time. I listened to the news the other night, and there was someone from Berkeley that teaches power distribution. I had no idea that was a course at Berkeley, but apparently it is. And that person said that the answer to these problems in the future will be microgrids, and that's something that we're hopefully getting close to getting a report on from the folks that we engaged to do that for us. As I recall, it was a multi-stage study, and we should be getting a report from them soon, I hope. The other issue is, is I think, and it kind of dovetails in with the dog park, I think that the cities did the correct thing by allowing PG&E access to that property to put their plug-and-play generator station in. I think the majority of the council obviously voted for that. At the same time, I would have to say that even without the generators placed at that location, that it's probably less than adequate size-wise for a dog park. So I think that PG&E might be willing to work with us a little bit down there as to how they configure where the controlling mechanisms go and like that, to where it may not be useful as a dog park 365 days a year, but certainly useful as a dog park for the majority of the year. At the same time, and I could be getting the cart before the horse here, we are investigating, we're beyond investigating the purchase of the fairgrounds. I think we're moving forward on that, and we'll have a dollar number here that we're going to give and get the financing straightened out and everything in the next few months. But certainly, the fairgrounds may have an opportunity, not just for a dog park, but perhaps a second community garden, because folks that used that original community garden came from those apartments that are right across the street from what's now the Boys and Girls Club. And I would imagine that it's difficult for those folks to get all the way down to the other end of Washington Street, perhaps, to grow their vegetables down there. So, you know, there might be an opportunity there at the fairgrounds to put in a better dog park, and certainly investigate, looking at putting a more available community garden for folks that live on the other side of town there. So that's basically my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford.
I've got nothing to add.
All right, thank you. Am I assuming, Mike, we're going to talk about, when we get to PSPS, the generator station? We can. I'll cover it now, then. So obviously, we went through another PSPS, including 800,000 other PG&E customers, and that's a misleading number, because 800,000 refers to the number of meters they have, not the number of people that live behind those meters. So the greater impact was almost 2.5 million people. This city was the first city to be subjected to a full-on PSPS by PG&E last October, as we all know, and we had a significant number of key learnings from that experience, as did PG&E. This city worked very hard and very long to secure a commitment from PG&E to become a generator-supported community, I believe to be the first one, and currently the only one, in the PG&E region as a test. We are striving toward that, to reference the Washington Street location for the permanent plug-and-play station, or the PIH. We appreciate that this takes time. We also appreciate the fact that this is a significant investment being made in a community that is of a relatively small size, but we certainly appreciate the efforts we're doing to work with PG&E to accomplish that. We do know the reasons why they would like to have that here, because of what we've been subjected to in the past. There are other communities, it should be noted, that are giving PG&E a very difficult time, because they are not being considered for a PIH that we do have, and that we do have coming our way. This last PSPS, and I'm commenting on this because of some feedback I've gotten from the community, power went off at midnight. In theory, the generator station should have gone on within two hours after that. It did not. It was about a nine-hour delay. For that, PG&E apologizes. We apologize, but I have to say, please consider the relativity of that. We were out of power for nine hours, two-thirds of the community, which I'll address the other third in a moment. There are other communities that were out for up to five days. So let's put it in perspective. We're very fortunate to be where we are. The other third of the community, myself being in that part of the third, we live on the other side of the river. Some would suggest we live on the wrong side of the river. I happen to think it's the more beautiful side of the river, but either way, we're without power as a result, not of what generators can do or the amount of power they can create. You heard me reference earlier, it's absolutely driven by what the CPUC and CAL FIRE allows. So even when we have our permanent generator station at the end of Washington Street, as the universe stands today, they still will not be able to power us on the west side of the river. So we need to find other solutions for that. This particular PSPS generator support was done so through the generators that are currently up at the substation, which have been utilized, I believe, since May for the transmission line repairs. PG&E was able to get some fast work done to make those available to us for this particular PSPS. It is not lost on me as to what the neighboring community had to deal with in terms of the noise, the fumes from those generators. They've been subjected to them throughout the summer, as PG&E hardens its system. But as is often the case, you have to make decisions. PG&E had to make those decisions. CAL FIRE had to make those decisions. The city was involved in some of those decisions, and the feeling was it was best to benefit the vast majority of the community by having those generators operate for public health and safety reasons. And unfortunately, there is a neighborhood that, you know, bears the brunt of that. There's not much we can do about that. The alternative was to not energize those generators and have an entire community dark, no grocery stores, no electrical support, no cooling centers, at least in community buildings. So those are the things and the factors we have to balance in all of this. So as we move forward, it is still a plan for PG&E to have a permanent solution for us, for at least two-thirds of us, at the other end of Washington. And with that said, for the other third of the community, we are looking and exploring other options and potential solutions, but I would say, in the short term, we're going to have to be resilient enough to kind of take care of ourselves, take care of neighbors, and during the next PSPS, cross the river a little more often to get some power and access to things. So thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for what you did for your neighbors to help them out during this period. And, you know, hindsight being 2020, we can all second-guess whether it was right or not for PG&E to shut off that power. We'll leave that to people above my pay grade, but the reality is, is we did experience on Mount St. Helena, registered 77 mile-an-hour winds. On Bennett Lane, which is the valley floor in Calistoga, 50 mile-an-hour winds, and a fire didn't start. So did it not start because there was no power, or whatever the case may be? We're past that now, and all the others fight that out. As you can see, our governor is doing that, seems to be on an hourly basis. So with that said, we will move on to the city manager's report. Mike.
Good evening, Mayor. A couple of items. As part of the PSPS, folks potentially have a lot of spoiled food, so Upper Valley Waste Management will allow people to put their spoiled food in their green cans this week only for a collection on Thursday. If you want to take advantage of that, you need to call them and register your address. Their phone number is 963-7988. And that's my understanding for the Calistoga area. I don't know if there's anything outside of us that they made accommodations for. And the reason you need to register is, they're going to pick that green can up and put it in the garbage can. If you're not registered, they're going to pick up that green can and put it in the compost pile, and that's no bueno. So make sure you register. Couple of other items. Saturday, October 26th, there's going to be two events here in town. One will be at the fairgrounds, Household Hazardous Waste Collection event. That will be from 9:00 to 3:00. And then through the Seroptimus and the Police Department, there are going to be a safe medicine disposal right in front of the police station on the edge of the sidewalk there, Saturday 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00. So you can bring your medicines that you want to dispose of, and I believe they take Sharps as well. And then lastly, Public Works has been working diligently to do some much-needed stormwater management maintenance activities. They've been cleaning the drainage ditch, we call it the Solage Ditch, that runs on the backside of the airport property from the corner of the Mobile Home Park, all the way down to the bike path. So that has not been cleaned aggressively for about the last four years, but they've been on it for almost two weeks now, and they'll get that wrapped up.
We used to call it the Diablo Ditch.
I think they'd prefer that.
Anyway, it's getting a very significant makeover. That's all I have to report, Mayor.
Do we have confirmed the community forum for November for Grant Street Project?
We've started putting the mailer together. It'll be going out to the same folks that were mailed at the last time. Reached out to our consultants and W Trans to be here, and hopefully, we'll be ready to go. to go.
And that is November 13?
November 13th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And that's for the Grant Street rehabilitation project, or the rebuilding of Grant Street?
Reconstruction.
Reconstruction, thank you. Better word.
From Garnet Creek Court to the northerly city limits.
Thank you very much. There is not another place on the agenda that we're gonna be discussing PSPS, correct?
We can probably weave it into the local declaration of emergency, which was a result of the PSPS.
Or I could take it right now. How's that?
Or you could take it right now.
Okay. I know there were some folks that wanted to address PSPS. Same rules apply. Three minutes, if you'd like to address the council, or at least the city manager on this. Anyone? Lana, are you still here?
We have to ask you something.
All right.
Don't we normally get a report and then allow public comment?
Uh, well, we're not doing a PSPS report, so, okay.
I have a question about it.
Please.
So, there's a lot of frustration regarding Comcast and the delay. Where's Comcast? Where's their hub located? And why, you know, why was that down and down for so long?
Good question. I don't know, and I don't have an answer. It affected not only us, but St. Helena was impacted. I just don't know. I reached out in two different venues through the Napa County OES department, advising them that this was critical infrastructure that wasn't functioning. I also reached out to the contact at Comcast that I have, and I got crickets.
Okay. And then, I guess, as a notation, I, for one, and I assume everybody else did, but there definitely were issues with cell service. I thought the cell strength was significantly diminished. I'm on Verizon, so, you know, going forward, I just think that's a legitimate issue. I don't know if anybody else has comments on that. And I think my biggest complaint regarding the whole thing was that I thought they flipped the power way too soon. And it just seems like they can make a better decision based on what's happening. I mean, I thought they were definitely about 24 hours too soon.
So, just to comment on that, your concerns are not the only ones that are of a similar nature. Senator Dodd wrote a two-page letter to PG&E, actually to the CPUC, demanding answers to similar questions. The CPUC authored a letter to the CEO of PG&E, I believe it's eight pages, demanding that about eight high-level representatives of PG&E appear before their commission this Friday to answer some very difficult and pointed questions regarding the timing, notification, continued notification during the event, lack of clarity and conciseness on their maps, just the same things that we berated them before.
Right.
I will say, at this time, during the phone calls, there were three calls daily, 7:30, 12:30, and 5:30, that I participated in, and the mayor sat in on a few of them as well. It felt that it was more organized in how they handled it. I believe during most of those calls, the initial calls, it was a little more scramble, but then they got onto a different private line, if you will. There were probably over 500 people on the calls at any one given time. So, they were fielding significant question and answers. I think the thing that was most different this time was, all of the information was being relayed through the county OES office. So, there wasn't individual cities or entities, school districts, trying to, you know, hone in and get an individual answer. They were, they tried to structure it with some very, I guess, strategic hierarchy that said, if you have a specific question, go through your OES and have them ask it to us. And they pushed the information back the same way. And while I can understand the frustration that everybody had, this, I felt, was more organized than the time before. And we had to be disciplined in what information we relayed to the public because we didn't want to get ahead of the message from the county, because they're the lead. They were the lead in this whole event. And when they pushed something out, and we put something behind it that gave a little more detailed information specific to the city. But, you know, 24 hours was probably, it would've been better if they did it, you know, at 6:00 o'clock in the morning, when it was a little bit lighter. I think that hindered their ability to re-energize the portions of the community that they were going to sooner rather than later, because they really couldn't do the work at dark. It might've been better, you know, in hindsight, that they pulled the plug, you know, 3:00 the afternoon before, so they could be doing that work during the daylight. But they were trying to balance, you know, what their forecasted weather was projecting for them.
They did do a far better job this time of warning us when the switch was actually gonna be flipped. If you recall, last year, it was, hey, at some point, it's gonna happen, then shazam, it was off. At least here, we had a given point in time that we had to be prepared for, so...
And...
Whether that was a day earlier or not, either way, it was at least a point in time.
And they were navigating this through approximately 30 counties. So, it was huge. They had 5,000 employees on the ground. They had 45 helicopters ready to, you know, begin the recon for restoration. So, it was, logistically, a nightmare. I would not have wanted to bend in their shoes.
I have been involved in major disasters over a period of two decades at least. There is a system that will function if people are properly trained and follow the system, and it's called the Incident Command System, SEMS, the Standardized Emergency Management System. The OES director here in the county certainly has been on a number of major disasters himself. There should be a written plan template. We have a couple of these events now. There should be something like that in existence, if it isn't already. The county functions statewide as the operational area. All public entities within that operational area have access to that, and mutual aid needs are met through that. So, I think while a large part of this almost disaster belongs to PG&E, part of it also revolves around the county and our ability, and the city's ability, to cope with these things. Certainly, PG&E should have a representative at the county EOC. Each city should have a representative at the county EOC. Operational area fire rescue coordinator should be in the EOC. Operational area law enforcement, medical, all of those people should be present in the EOC and be able to coordinate whatever their discipline is and is needed out in the field. I think these PSPS incidents show that a strong presence needs to be in the EOC from PG&E and any other utility like Comcast. Comcast has a disaster responsibility that I believe there is computer access at the dispatch center at the St. Helena PD, so that we can put disaster information on a crawler on the bottom of people's TV sets when they're on. So, if Comcast is going out, we lose that ability to communicate. If the cell sites are going down, and for some reason, this doesn't surprise me, we lose the ability to use Nixle, and we're telling folks to sign up for Nixle. So, there's redundancy needed in notification. There's things that need to be done better on the county level to help us coordinate locally what happens for our citizens, business, and industry. And I think, because I'm familiar with what happened within the city, that we responded to the situation probably better than other locations did. But as these things reoccur, there will be refinements. I think this latest one was better than the first one we had, but it's still a long way from being what it needs to be. So, that being said, great deal of responsibility is on PG&E because of their lack of maintenance, lack of communication, unfamiliarity with how they're actually going to execute a PSPS, but some of it also comes to the local governments in being able to cope with the inevitable screw-ups that happen, like they don't know where the switches are, or something, you know, to make things work, so...
Thank you.
So, Gary, are you thinking that there are, that the city could've responded better to this?
I think our city responded very well.
Okay, so you're satisfied with the response?
And we have the fire chief and the police chief here that'll explain what occurrences happened here. But I had a flood emergency when I was the OES director in Sutter County, and we had written plans in place before the river started rising. We knew what we were gonna evacuate. We knew where people were gonna, we knew what power poles needed to be shut off. And we had a pretty well-organized situation. That wasn't because I was the OES director. It was because we'd gone through it every couple of years over there. But repetition does make you better at things. And certainly, this kind of an emergency is one that you can plan for. An earthquake happens right now, and you better be able to react to it. A public safety power shut-off, you've got three, four days' notice on it. And I know that we responded, and I'm sure you'll have report from our department heads on what happened. But not getting that information into the city, I had citizens calling me, asking if I knew what was happening. A restaurant gave me a call, and said, I've got employees that are coming in, and, you know, I've got, you know, people that are standing out here, don't have power at their home, they can't cook, you know? I mean, it's a mess. So, being able to communicate with folks that this is what's happening, although we can't throw switches to put the power back on ourself, that communication portion is the responsibility of PG&E to us. And certainly, the preparation for what we're going to do and how we're gonna handle things is on us, so...
In fairness to the county, they did have the OES activated and was staffed with just about everyone you suggested. I don't think we had, the individual cities didn't have a representative there, but we're engaged in those three calls a day. And actually, I think you had county OES calls on top of that.
Correct. We had daily county OES calls and then frequent exchanges with emails before, during, and after the PG&E phone calls. So, both myself, the two chiefs, were constantly engaged in interacting with Napa OES.
But I can tell you, coordinating 6,300 PG&E people should be a cakewalk. North Ops up in Reading coordinates 15,000 people and got resources from afar away as Seattle down here to the Tubbs Fire and the Atlas Peak Fire when it was necessary. And PG&E should be as well-oiled, because the consequences of that are possibly not as catastrophic as a fire running from Calistoga through the middle of Santa Rosa, but the potential for it is.
So, I was glad to hear from the fire chief that he is pursuing the low-wattage AM station, ADM radio station possibility, because, as you say, if the towers go down, if Nixle is out, that we're referring people to all the time...
Yeah. Set off the sirens, now what do you do?
Yeah.
We also already have an AM and FM station that proved invaluable during the fires of 2017 and the PSPS of last year. So, let's just be careful that we're not replicating, because when you replicate and duplicate, you don't necessarily improve your situation, because now you have to have it operated...
But at the same time, you're competing for airtime with every other jurisdiction that wants to do something out.
Mm-hmm. All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure. At the podium, please, so that people at home can hear what you have to say.
So, Brian Fennin, Calistoga resident and a parent of a couple of kids in school. I know you don't have kids in school here. So, what happened during that PSPS? You know, the power was out. They were expecting it to be on by 8:00 in the morning for schools to start up. And I was one of those parents texting and communicating with other parents to find out what's going on. I was at the high school. I mean, I got up at 5:00 in the morning to find out what's going on, riding my bike around. But, so, there were promises made, and we're all, okay, let's, okay, the power's gonna come on. Oh, it sounds, okay, they're starting up the generators. It took them a while, because they probably had to go check their switchgear. But, so, the power came on at the high school at 9:08 AM. Their communication equipment is all at the elementary school. So, nobody could, without power, no parents can call in or call out. I mean, they, you know, the school can't call out, they can't activate their all-call system, which they can use. And because the elementary school didn't get power till 1:30, right? So, they were, they were, they, the teachers held it together there and kept the kids in. So, it worked out. But the other thing that you talked about Comcast, is the high school was open with power, but they had no internet. So, I get texts from my kids, it's like, I'm bored, because they're doing so much online learning these days. So, just so you're aware, that their all-call system is at the elementary school. So, their whole system does not function if there's no power at the elementary school, even if the high school is operating. Their internet is down and all of that. Just another little, if you have any influence on, you know, making sure that that doesn't happen again, because they, it promised, I think, that both campuses were gonna be powered up, and eventually, it was at the elementary school. Don't know what the hang-up there was, but that's what happens to the school district, too.
And in fairness to the school district, we are in very close contact with them, as was PG&E. And we all had, the best available information was that by the time school would start, they would be powered. And it was, felt that the safest place for those kids to be would be in two campuses that were powered and ready to go. And it is certainly a situation where if school was called off and it was powered, they weren't gonna win that decision either.
I wholeheartedly agreed with the decision this time to keep school on. I feel it's better to have the kids in school, like you said, in a safe place, rather than out there at home with parents trying to figure out what to do with their kids.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? You remembered, Lana.
One of the things that I think is important to address, and I don't know who addresses it, but the first power off would theoretically be the first power restored, and it was opposite of that. Hours went off first and came on last, especially in communities that have vulnerable citizens that need medical equipment, oxygen, things like that. I think those should be put at a higher priority. And like the Cedars Care Home, if it's not gonna have power during the PSPS, get it back there as quickly as possible. When I was coming back through the valley on Thursday, there were a lot that had already been energized down valley. But up here, it was hit and miss. And like I said, we didn't get anything back until 6:00 on Friday, so...
5:56, to be exact.
They made it by four minutes.
What I can assure you of, and Mike has been involved in these conversations as well, is PG&E is well-aware of the high concern we have in your specific community.
Yeah.
It's just a unique and isolated situation that they're trying to accommodate for, and this PSPS, they didn't have it accommodated for, but they are... this PSPS, they didn't have it accommodated for, but they are, and the reason down-valley cities were energized first is they're closer to transmission centers, transmission lines that don't run through the Tier Three where ours come in from, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, we're kind of on an island out here, but everyone's aware in every one of these situations that happens, you know, to Councilmember Kraus's point, is they're learning, just not fast enough.
Right. Well, and the Comcast thing is certainly a big issue as well. Even when I had power through my generator, I didn't have Comcast. Luckily, I had Wi-Fi, because I used, I have Verizon and my signal was fine, and I used my personal hotspot as my Wi-Fi connection. So I still had that, but I don't think a lot of people even are aware of that.
Yep. Thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment? Because Cedars Care Home and L&amp;B Care Home, both are licensed by the state, one of the requirements for us is to be ready for emergencies, no matter what. So we have to be ready for emergencies 24/7. So luckily, we prepare ourselves ahead of time. With generators, we got food in storage, in coolers, we got a lot of ice, and, you know, we have ready ahead of time for, to keep our residents safe and comfortable as much as possible. So, you know, I appreciate your comments and your concerns, but just to, you know, be sure that our residents were okay the whole time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. You're all set, city manager, on that?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Proclamations, Presentations and Awards. Number one, presentation from the Building and Planning Department, Agenda Item Number One. Taking us through this will be Zach Toosinger. Zach, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Happy to be sharing with you a little bit of what the Planning and Building Department's been up to for the last year, fiscal year. First off, just want to note, it is timely that we're doing this. It's National Planning Month, designated by the American Planning Association, so we're trying to bring a little bit of awareness here.
I think they get you a free coffee or a free beer at a local establishment, right?
Something, I don't know.
We'll look into that.
As long as it's not worth 50 bucks, I think you can accept.
Okay, so noted. So just to review a little bit, I wanted to start with some of the, kind of the bigger projects that we worked in terms of applications that we took to the Planning Commission for entitlements in the last year or so since we did this report. One was the Lincoln Avenue Apartments. This has been entitled for next to the Calistoga Motor Lodge. It's about 70 apartments, three stories, there's an affordable component to this. We're hoping that we will see a building permit application for this in the near future. Like a lot of developers, they're running into high costs and finding workers, but they are still planning on building this, and we're hoping to see it happen soon. Another one was a couple of months ago, we took an application from the Calistoga Motor Lodge next door for what they're calling their third-phase expansion plans. Everybody's driven by there, they've seen the restaurant and the 12 rooms that are currently under construction at the property. This approved entitlement allows them to basically max out the site for what they really can fit on the property, and that's an additional 39 rooms. We don't know what sort of timeline they're looking at to actually building those rooms, but they're primarily concentrated in two-story hotel motel block buildings that are designed to minimize impact on the views from surrounding properties and should make a nice addition to that property. Some other kind of smaller things that we've handled, processed application-wise in the last year, Dr. Wilkinson's remodel, that property changed hands about a year ago. The company that bought it from the Wilkinson's family is adding a couple of rooms and doing a pretty serious, comprehensive refresh of the property, cosmetics, landscaping, adding some parking, bringing it into the 21st century a little bit. Joe Branham Tree Care is getting ready to build a new location down on Lower Washington. The Napa County Office of Education Preschool, which is going to be moving to accommodate the Vine Trail construction, is going to be relocating to a space adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club. We've handled several administrative design reviews for some single-family dwellings. If you live in a neighborhood where one of these is happening, you've probably got mailers from me, and you've seen signs in the front yard. And then we've processed several use permits for tasting rooms and other businesses around town as well. So we've been pretty busy keeping our planning commissioners busy with applications. Some other projects that are currently in review and various stages, one is the Veranda Indian Springs, and that's about, how many rooms is that currently? It's proposed for 96 rooms. This would be an expansion of Indian Springs. We're still pretty early in the process for that. Another one that's been mentioned tonight, that we are still processing the application, we haven't received any new submittals from them, and there really hasn't been happening a whole lot from the city's perspective on this project, is the proposed Yellow Rose Ranch. They've hosted over the last year or so a series of community meetings, they're not city meetings per se, but they have hosted some meetings, and staff has attended a few of those to listen and answer questions as they arise. So we'll see what happens with this application going forwards in the future. Another project in review is the Grant Street Amber Way subdivision proposal. This is over off Grant Street, there's a little stub called Redwood Avenue, there's a bunch of redwood trees in the median, and there's currently a proposal to do a map for 13 lots. This is also still an incomplete application that we expect maybe we'll be getting a resubmit on it, if not later this year, certainly earlier next year, to start processing, moving that forward as well. Some other projects that are in review, Roman Spa has had an expansion plan in the works for a while. Aurora Park Cottages over off Foothill is planning on adding three units, and they have an application that they're fine-tuning before it goes to Planning Commission. Crystal Geyser has a couple different proposed expansions, those applications are still incomplete, but we expect those will be coming to Planning Commission, if not later this year, early next year. There is a proposal for a new hotel called the Eddie Hotel on Lincoln Avenue. This is still a very incomplete application, and stay tuned, we'll see if this moves forward.
What, where at?
It is across from Calistoga Motor Lodge, near Silverado. And then we've been handling a bunch of other miscellaneous permits, lot line adjustments, design reviews, home occupations, and all kinds of other things that keep us pretty busy day-to-day. Some other things that are happening around town that we're working on, I'm sure everybody over the last year's noticed, the new wayfinding signs that have gone up on Lincoln Avenue, that project's pretty much completed. We're working with a consultant to study some additional parking areas downtown, and we're in the early stages, working with Public Works and the Chamber on possibly evaluating some future downtown streetscaping improvements, including trees and possible changes to lighting. So we'll probably be bringing something to your council on that, if not this year, then certainly early next year, I would expect. Some other things that are happening, the Silverado Trail Gateway design has been finalized. We've applied for grant funding for the Silverado Trail Gateway, and we're cautiously optimistic on that. We are also currently working to submit an SB2 grant, this is a state grant that all jurisdictions in California are eligible for, to receive, it's a relatively small pot of money to help with housing, and we're working with some other communities in Napa County on sort of a larger project that would help homeowners who are interested in doing accessory dwelling units to help provide and facilitate more information, perhaps more ready-to-go, off-the-shelf plans and things like that, just to make the process easier and a little bit more streamlined. Some other projects, we did complete a code update for lot coverage and accessory structures that came to your council a few months ago. In progress are some updates to some general plan elements, these have been in the works for a while, and will be continuing into next year. It includes infrastructure, geothermal and economic development. And one of the things, and this has really cropped up in the last week, is monitoring new statewide legislation. Governor Newsom signed 18 new housing laws in the last week, and we're still trying to look at those and understand what the practical impacts for Calistoga may be. A number of them have to do with ADUs, fees and other things, so it's quite likely we'll probably have some either fee or code updates that we'll be eventually making it to your One of the things that we work on is the rehab loan program. To date, it's given 53 rehab loans for over $2 million. Most of those are around $22,000. Generally, these go to mobile home repairs. Demographics of the folks who have received these loans, it's predominantly seniors, a lot of folks at the very low or low-income levels. So that's it for planning primarily, our building section. Everybody knows Brad and our new permit technician, Claudia. Claudia is our first true permit technician, and she's going to have her ICC certification by the year end, so if you haven't come in or if you need to pull a building permit, these are the two folks who will help you out. Little bit of a highlight of what their division accomplished in the last year for fiscal year 1819, they issued 337 permits. That's more than one permit a day of business days. Valuation over $18 million in building permits. Of course, they're doing reviews and inspections for projects, they have ongoing code enforcement activities they're working on. Some permit highlights for them, the motor lodge, the 12 guest rooms and restaurant that I mentioned earlier that you're seeing under construction, the Rivers Marie Winery on Foothill, working through all the different permits and plan checks at 400 Silverado, and the Lincoln Avenue Brewery, which I would note is just a restaurant at this point, they haven't received a use permit to be a brewery, and continued mobile home replacements. There've been a few new mobile homes going into the parks. And then also, no surprise here, they've definitely seen an uptick in people installing generators and solar and battery storage. Some other plan checks, they're currently processing building plans for 11 new cottages and a meeting room at Solage, additional changes and plan checks for building permit-related activities at 400 Silverado, and then grading and other permitting for all the work that's going on up in the trees, up at Calistoga Hills off of Foothill. And then there have been some other minor improvements at Indian Springs that have been keeping them pretty busy, as well as all the different downtown businesses that are working on different tenant improvements as different tenants change over or as people relocate from space to space with their business. Some accomplishments for the building section in the last year, online building permit submittal is now operational for simple projects, and that's really streamlined the process for some folks. Currently, they're working on a building standards code adoption and coordinating with other Napa County building officials on some different projects and trying to get handouts out there just to make everything a little bit more business-friendly for residents and people doing projects in town. And currently, they are working through different inspections on mobile home parks, wrapping up Calistoga Springs, and getting ready to start tackling the next round of inspections at Chateau. And I know that was quite a laundry list I gave you, but I think the takeaway is my department's been pretty busy, and we're really looking forward to the next year. There's a lot of interesting things on the horizon, and, you know, we stand ready to be at service for citizens and residents.
Thank you, Zach. Councilmembers, questions, comments? You guys do a great job over there, thank you very much, thank your team. A couple of things that I think it's really important to remind people of, and you can please correct me if I'm wrong, we are required by California law to consider projects brought forward regardless of what we may think of them at the beginning. Yellow Rose is a prime example. We often receive comments and emails, et cetera, why would you ever consider a particular project, I'm not calling out Yellow Rose, but by law, we are required to do so. So everyone has the ability and the opportunity to do with their land as they see fit, assuming it meets the local laws and regulations. The second thing I'd like to remind people of, and I know this is an unpopular comment with some folks, but by law, in the state of California, your general plan is amendable, and there's actually specific statutes written for that purpose. And we, those are things that a community needs to take into consideration time and time again, and I believe you're required to review it on a regular basis. So just keep that in mind and understand that when projects come forward and they make that request, it's at that moment in time that we make those considerations, and the community decides whether they feel that's what fits them and their needs at this moment in time versus something that may have been decided 20, 30 years ago, et cetera. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Sorry. All right, moving on to, no public hearings, we'll move to general government. Item number three, follow-up report and planned community survey, the recommended action is to receive a report and provide feedback to staff. Taking us through this will be Zach, I believe. Again, thanks, Zach.
Pardon me, Mayor, just the approval of the consent item, there's one.
Did I skip over that? All right, entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunford, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, carries unanimously. Moving on now to item number three, Zach, sorry for that.
Thank you again, Mayor, council. On October 1st, your last council meeting, we brought to you an item with a preliminary draft of the survey that is being planned for residents. After that meeting, we took your suggestions and incorporated those into the draft of the survey. Those included eliminating or rewording several questions, adding a couple of survey questions pertaining either to Nixal alerts or climate change, and the actual possible answers for several multiple-choice questions were altered or simplified based on council suggestions. Also subsequent to that, did meet with a couple of council members to incorporate some additional feedback into the draft. That is what went out in your packet, I think it was a red-line copy showing exactly the changes that were made. We did get a set of suggestions from a resident that came in, I believe, yesterday, and I'd like to go through those. The city manager and I met today to go through these possible recommended changes. I believe you have a copy or received a copy of this. We sent out a subsequent draft of the survey incorporating several of these changes, several of which we did think were quite good and quite valuable. This particular resident has a background in surveys, so I think, you know, we would definitely defer to experts on these things. If you'll indulge me, I'll go through a few of these real quick that we did do. Survey should, the first one on the first page of this was, "Surveys should move from general to specific to minimize biasing." Question 15 should have been moved to after question eight to avoid bias. I think that's a fantastic comment, and we did incorporate that into the draft. The next one was, "Respondents are sensitive to demographic questions, and demographic questions should normally be asked at the end of the survey." Excellent comment, easy fix, you will see in the draft in front of you, demographic questions have been moved to the end. The next one was the suggestion to use a four-point response scale whenever possible. In the initial draft that we brought to you a few weeks ago, we did try to do that. Based on some comments we heard, we did simplify a few questions to three options rather than four. We can certainly go back to four, if that's the direction from council. I think there's a pretty good argument for that, but if the direction is to leave it as is, I think that's probably okay as well. There were several suggested questions to add. The first one was a pretty lengthy barrage of questions about job approval of different bodies, different departments and different staff members. One of our things that we're real sensitive to is making sure that this survey doesn't get too long. Staff's recommendation would be not to include that full barrage at this point. Again, if council's direction is to include it, you have pretty good language in front of you here, and we'll definitely follow your direction. The next two questions.
Zach, can you repeat that? What was that request?
Yeah, so on the second page of this letter that you received, it was, it's number one on the second page, and it was job approvals, and it was to rate, approve or disapprove of the job of each of the following, including council, city manager, city staff, different departments.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, and then there were two suggested questions, I guess generally looking for issue importance, and then a question about thoughts on growth in the city of Calistoga. The city manager and I talked these over, we, our perspective is the open-ended questions that we've incorporated cover this. Our perspective is the open-ended questions that we've incorporated cover this, so our recommendation would not be to add those questions. Again, trying to be real sensitive to the length of this survey since this is our first real attempt at doing a community-wide resident survey. That being said, again, if council's direction is to add those, you've got good language in front of you and that can easily be incorporated. Where we're at with this survey is, based on your feedback tonight, we're pretty close to being able to hit the ground running. One of the things in this letter was asking how the survey was actually going to be handled online and making sure you're using software that tracks and prevents repeat takers. They mentioned Survey Monkey. That is in fact the software we're going to be using. I have a lot of experience with it. I've been using it since college, so I know how to use it. And we stand ready to get this out and circulating in the public at your direction. The only thing after tonight, if your direction is to move forward, we just need to update the translation that we're preparing in Spanish and get everything fine-tuned digitally and paper copies ready. And we'll make this live and then we'll really begin the outreach push to get the word out in the community that this is available for folks. So with that, be happy to answer any questions or hear any of your feedback.
Thank you, Zach. Council members, questions, comments?
Yes, Zach, thank you for looking over that input from Mr. Holmes. And I agree, let's see, numbers one, two, and number three, you know, I had talked about simplifying and using three points, but I want to retract my suggestion and adopt his suggestion. He's an expert in this, he's knowledgeable, and his thinking is that in most cases, the four-point response scale is preferable. And that's what you originally had, and my suggestion had been to simplify, but I think his idea is better. So I'm fine going back to a four-point question.
Everyone else okay with that one by consensus? Yep? Okay. Keep going, John. Sorry.
Yes, and I would like to include his suggested questions. Number one, job approvals. Number two, issue importance comparison. And number three, growth trade-off. I asked him about the length, and he said right away, he said, "That is not a concern." In his professional opinion, we're not too long. And it's a good question that you have raised, and I thought the same thing. But he said, "No." It's what, in his opinion, you have a very good start in the draft that you originally generated and that a couple of other questions that he suggested would not make it too long. So I would like to incorporate his questions, numbers one, two, and three. And actually, in that case, if the council is agreeable, to number two, I'd like to add a couple of other possible topics. He has a list of issues that he identified. And I would add a letter L, emergency preparedness, and a letter M, small-town tradition.
How would you define that?
These are a list of issues. These are topics that-
But in terms of small-town tradition, I mean, that's going to mean a million things to a lot of people.
The question is, how serious an issue is this for you? Is this a serious topic? You know, water rates, is this a serious topic? Or not very serious? Or very serious?
But in terms of the phrasing, small-town tradition-
Small-town tradition. It's just a-
I think it's more commonly referred to as small-town character and charm.
Well, that would be fine. Small-town character is fine.
I'm not saying just-
No, I'm not locked into that.
Yep.
And then, so that would be my suggestion on those. I think they're good questions that he, and he generated them after years of, you know, building on his own professional experience. And then, did you get into the weeds there on those, on some of the existing questions? He had some reservations about those. And question 12, 17, 18, and so on.
Yeah, we looked at those. There's a few of these. I think we chose our language fairly deliberately in the way we crafted it. I think there's also a few that, you know, we probably could massage the language a little bit for clarity, and I think that's certainly doable.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see, I'm just looking at them now, since this is the time because we want to get it cranked out. So let's see, I'm on his third page and the section, he titled, "Recommended wording changes to existing draft questions." And then he went to number 12. First of all, he went to question 12. This is two separate questions. I see what he's saying. Does it make sense to break them up into-
I think our perspective is, you know, without getting too far into developing a full separate survey about actual staff performance, we're comfortable with the language courteous and responsiveness being together. I don't necessarily see that as an either-or. That's probably one that I think staff would be okay with maybe passing on that recommendation specifically. Going through some of these others, number two or question 17 that he mentions, this was obviously a question that we added after the last meeting, and I think we, the city manager and council and myself, we kind of fine-tuned this language. If there's recommended language that you would rather have on that one, I'm comfortable making that change as well.
He just suggests omitting that last option.
Sure.
Yeah. Or putting it in a separate-
That could very easily be done.
Yeah. And then question number 18, I had my own reservation on that one, which was mainly, I didn't understand the options, I'm not sure, or I had a hard time figuring out, what is this meant by, what are the new infrastructure, new facilities, expanded services? It wasn't clear to me how these are different, and I think somehow, maybe giving an example after each one, or what is meant by new infrastructure or new facilities? How are those different? Expanded services, are those not new facilities? Are they not new services? So somehow, clarifying what is meant by each one of those, I guess, I thought would be helpful.
Question 18?
Number 18, yeah. I mean, we may know, or, you know, your office may know the difference between new infrastructure, new facilities, expanded services, but I might look at expanded services and, well, isn't that new facilities, isn't that expansion of service? Or if an example could be put behind each one.
I'm looking at the city manager. I think we could probably facilitate examples pretty easily on that one.
So that's- I specifically requested a question like that be put in there because I viewed this survey as an opportunity to get some input on what we were going to do with new revenue coming into the city from the, and those were my suggestions. I think one of the issues is if you said expand services and then gave one example, someone would say, "Yeah, expand service. I want, you know, a class and underwater basket weaving at the, you know, at this community pool or something like that." So, you know, I think expanding services is probably, to me anyway, self-explanatory. I could see-
I agree with the point of your question, Gary. Just, I'm trying to help people understand.
Yeah, and I'm just not wanting someone to see something like infrastructure and not see something that they think should be done, like repairing a street or something like that. So whether the term of art that we're using there is too sophisticated for our citizens, I don't know. I think, you know, it just, should we build something? What would that something be? But that's what infrastructure is. So that was where that came from. The question about climate change, many of you that have listened to these city council meetings know that I have a habit of being flippant sometimes. And there is no such thing as, was an example that I gave, so I don't have any problem taking "there is no such thing as climate change" off it because we do have then four choices for that. But it should be nice to know if there are people that absolutely don't believe that there's climate change. But otherwise, I think everybody that listened to the last meeting knew I was uncomfortable with the survey the way it was and, you know, how scientific was it going to be? And I really appreciate Paul's efforts in this regard. And depending on how this goes, this might be something that we do maybe once a year. I don't see every time an issue comes up with the city that, you know, we do another survey, but certainly a general survey, depending on how this goes, on an annual basis for our planning process. The other thing that I have a question about, and that is on job approvals. I'm not afraid to hear what someone might say about the city council, because I know it's one of the other four people if it's a complaint.
Plus, people aren't shy about sharing that anyways.
Yeah. But I would want to have the city attorney opinion as to whether that could be construed as the city council seeking campaign information at public expense. I know that there's been some issues with other cities of council members using a city website to promote something, and it's come out that that's not the proper use of the city's time. So I don't have a problem with the job approval line items, but I would like to know if, including the city council there, is a potential problem. That should be a yes or no answer from our city attorney, if that question is going to be in.
Let's take these one by one. So in terms of item number one, council members, how do you feel about the inclusion?
Do you mean go through each question?
No, I mean, how do you feel about item number one being included? Job approvals.
I'm good with it, and I'm fine with asking the attorney about that.
Yeah, I'm good with it too, but I just want to make sure on that one-
I think if it's asked as a body, you're fine. It's when you go individual, but we'll get the opinion.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
I'm comfortable with job approvals. I mean, we all work for our constituents, so let's hear what they have to say. Michael?
I have a problem with the whole survey, so I'm-
Michael, I'm interested in your reservation, actually.
Well, I have a couple of things. One is, like, whose idea, like, who determined that we needed to? I'm all for, I don't have a problem with surveys, but what was the genesis of this?
Don Teague.
Okay. I think you're right. Yeah, okay. And I guess, it's just when I read a lot of these questions, I don't, some of them just don't make sense to me, like, the data that would be derived from the question. It's like, what is that telling you and what are you going to do with it? So, for example, the first question, would you say things in Calistoga are generally headed in the right direction? So let's just say a majority basically tells us we're heading in the wrong, we're going in the wrong track. So what do we do with that? It's not specific enough for us to say, "Okay, we have to completely change and go a different direction, but what direction is that?" So I just feel like we're not being maybe specific enough, and maybe there's questions that are just a little too vague and don't really give you much of anything. Do you feel safe in Calistoga? I don't think I've ever heard anybody tell me that they don't feel safe in Calistoga. Maybe the chief needs to know that question, but-
I feel safe.
I mean, yeah, I just don't know if there's a serious safety issue. I've never heard that. There was a question about-
So if I may, Vice Mayor, so a lot of these questions, the ones that I think you're specifically referencing, are purposely sort of general. They are temperature-taking questions, for lack of a better term. Asking them once, probably not going to tell us a lot of information. Asking over a series of several years where we can perhaps identify trends, if certain things are going up or certain things are going down, that might be the first step to then saying, "Okay, we see there's a trend of something happening here," and then maybe then having further conversation about, "Okay, so what's driving that?" Or, "Do we need to add on a future survey specific questions?" So that's sort of where some of those are. Several of these questions, I don't think we're going to get valuable information necessarily out of if we do the survey just once, but if we do the survey over several years, and this is pretty common in other jurisdictions to have these sort of temperature-taking questions, then hopefully trends, and hopefully they're positive trends, would emerge.
So looking at like recreation, what activities do you and your family currently participate in Calistoga? And then there's a list. I just don't know if that tells us anything because we know, we have a park and rec director. We know if the basketball program is full and there's kids that are having a good time and there's great competition, it's a successful program. If there's a lack of participation, we drop it or we change it or whatever. So it seems like there's other ways for us to know if each of these different activities are successful or not. So I just see that as a bogus question. It doesn't really tell us anything.
So the recreation questions, our recreation director requested those. Those are actually survey questions. She has been doing in a kind of a separate departmental survey. I don't know how often or for how many years, but these are questions that she's, her department has gotten valuable information out of.
She created the questions. I could see the value in that because when you look at the demographics section, you would get an idea of what the demographic that's using those surveys. Obviously, a lot of them are going to be by kids.
There's a question on pavement. How do you, you know, our roads? Well, we have a pavement index that we know exactly what the status is of our roads, which many of them are horrible. So we know that. So I guess they'll maybe reinforce that a lot of our roads need fixing. So again, I'm for surveys. Some of the questions I think can lead to unintended consequences. For example, the downtown, let's see. Where's downtown?
Community development, are they?
There was a question, and you listed the wood canopy. You called it the arcade? I think you referred to it as an arcade.
Question 29, yeah.
So just as an example, the Chamber of Commerce and the city are working, I believe they're working on a consultant that's going to be doing sort of a downtown revitalization, strategic planning, sort of concept and proposal.
That's my understanding.
So through that process, there's going to be a process that will most likely address the wood canopy. And for somebody who's presented with, "Okay, should we take that down? And if you do take it down, what are you going to replace it with?" So if a consultant who's experienced says, "Here's a rendition. You see what it looks like today, but if we take it down and we put up individual awnings, we show off the different architectural elements of the buildings, and we plant trees to address shade," the answer to that question might be very different than how you've listed it here. And so you might get a lot of people that are against taking down the wood canopy because they don't actually understand what would replace it and what the intent is.
No question. No question. So they may answer the question one way this year, and if we did the survey again this year, they might answer differently.
Yeah, so that could drive policy. If you get everybody that says, "We want to keep that thing," that could drive policy when they haven't really had all the information and understand- that could drive policy when they haven't really had all the information and understand that if it were to come down, it might be transformed into something that's much more inviting, still provide shade, and actually drive customers to those businesses that need actually more customers.
So these are really good, these are really good questions, and I also have some questions, you know. And Mr. Holmes just sent his page, his letter in just a day or two ago, so we really haven't had time to review that. And you have some good questions, and I have some too. What about, I know that the city would like to be expeditious about this, but I'd rather get the survey right. What about if we review his letter, incorporate those, you know, identify those questions that you have, a couple that I have as well, and then review it, send them to the planning department?
If there's not a problem in delaying this yet again, and I apologize, Zach, I did reach out to you. I had every intention to put time into it, but then we had a power shut off and there's all kinds of things that got in the way. I would like to, if we're going to do it, I would like to do it right.
You better do it right.
And feel more comfortable about it.
And the draft we have now, you know, you've incorporated some Mr. Holmes suggestions, but we really haven't had a chance to review it as I would like to and maybe other council members would like to. So I know you have a timeframe, but I think it'd be more important to get it right.
At some point, though, we're, yeah.
Have the council feel satisfied about it.
I appreciate that, but at some point, we're going to have to muscle through this. So it's going to be, we can keep kicking this down the road, and I'm okay with postponing it another time. But if we keep burdening staff with coming back with a different draft and a different draft and a different draft, then let's make it a working session. So we'll have a separate council meeting. We sit down and we literally go through question by question, word by word, and we're done with it. Because otherwise, it's not very fair to, you know, we've got five different perspectives on every single question of which there are how many?
Forty, so far, forty-three now.
And to give you bits and pieces, and I agree with Don, we've just got Paul, Mr. Holmes' information, which I found very useful, and again, he's a subject matter expert. That's what he does for a living. But to do it back and forth, I'm not supportive of. If we want to do it and we want to do it right, then let's have a working session, and it's one that we all have to agree. We've got to roll up our sleeves and bang through all forty questions. Otherwise, we've got to, at some point, trust staff to take the input and produce something.
So I'm fine with a working session.
I am as well. Staff, are you fine with a working session?
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
All right. City manager, are you fine with one?
If Zach's looking forward to it, so am I.
Okay, it would be a published meeting, a special session. It could even be on a council day before or after. And it would obviously be published and open to the public, to which I would say, bring your comments, questions, concerns, and we'll go from there.
Let's see if we can get some more free advice from Paul.
I'm confident that that resident would be happy to contribute his years of expertise, and then we move forward from there. Hopefully, this helps you, Zach, not hurts you.
Oh, absolutely. We want to make sure this is right, and we want to get the best information possible. No question.
Just one thing, but you say we'll be open to the public, but that was the purpose of the.
Well, it'll be a published meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, not them coming in to answer the questions, but.
Oh, add more questions.
Or just give comments on what we're looking at, yeah. I mean, it's got to be a published meeting because the five of us are getting together.
Oh, I see. Okay.
With that said, I do have a speaker card, so I have to go with that first. Brian, would you like to wait for the working session or?
I'm good with that because I have a few comments, general comments, but generically, I'm thinking as a resident, assuming I should be a resident, so I just want to make sure there's some tweaks and conditions.
And if you would like to get those in advance to Zach, that would be helpful as well. Thank you. Karen? My suggestion is that the intent is it's if you're a Calistogan, you can answer this question.
But it's a very good point because if it's going to drive policy, you know, and cost that those residents bear, then it shouldn't be influenced or overweighted by those who don't bear that cost. So.
Let's keep that question for the working session.
It's a valid point.
I have a pretty strong opinion otherwise on that one.
We allow free access to the recreation programs to anybody within the zip code, I think, is how we, is how we did it. So.
And we're happy to take your tax dollars if you live outside of the city limits and you shop in the city limits.
That's very true, too. So.
Well, we'll take that under consideration at the working session. So Irene, it'll be up to you to find a date that works for all of us. Good luck. Zach, thank you for the work you've done to point on this, getting this going.
Sorry to throw a wrench and.
Appreciate your support. Looking forward to getting this to a place where everybody's.
I think it's an important endeavor. I am a big supporter of surveys. You don't know how you're doing until you ask, and be careful what you wish for. All right, moving on to item number four, consideration of a resolution ratifying the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency and a resolution terminating the local emergency. Recommended action is consider adopting the resolutions. City manager Kern, sorry, I'm stumbling because of the language we're using, and I know why we're just catching up to this. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. I mean, the recommendation is a recommendation. You either adopt or you don't, but we can wordsmith that later. But taking us through item number four, city manager Kern.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On October 9th, I declared a state of local emergency because of the P S P S. According to our code and state law, your council necessarily needs to ratify that decision within seven days, so we're within that window. We all know what happened on that evening. PG&E pulled the plug. It affected the entire city for quite some time and a significant portion for the whole event. During, before, during and after, all departments were mobilized and ready to respond. Public Works brought in extra fuel. We had two storage tanks of diesel and gas because we knew that the gas stations were going to be out of power. All city facilities were up and running. All public utilities were running. There was no interruption of water or sewer services during the event. The fire department and the police department conducted wellness checks frequently and regularly through all portions of the community with emphasis on the areas that were dark. PG&E set up a customer service center at the fairgrounds, and that was attended well, but not significantly. It was a cooling center, a charging station, and a place for folks to get water. We had charging stations set up at the police department and the fire department for people to charge up their cell phones and their oxygen batteries if they needed to. And all in all, we just patrol, and I think we performed very well during the event. Both police, fire, and public works are here. If you wanted to ask them any questions or let them have the opportunity to say what they did. But the two resolutions before you, the first one is to ratify the declaration of the local emergency. And since it's passed, we're going to recommend that you adopt a resolution terminating the local emergency. And the reason that we do this is because in the event that it turned more serious, we would have been covered with any financial assistance that the state or the federal government may be willing to give. There may be an opportunity down the road. If the state declares that this was a local, or an emergency, that we can dovetail behind that and get restitution for some of the efforts that we expended. My guess is that notwithstanding the day-to-day stuff that we did during the normal eight to five, we probably have something in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditures that were outside of our normal work activity. It would be nice to be able to recover some of that if we could. So with that, that's my presentation, and if you have any questions, the department heads.
I do have a question for the police and fire chief. Did we have any specific weather-related incidents or incidents related to the shut off of the power?
Please share with us your name and the position you hold.
Steve Campbell, Fire Chief. It's a good question, Mr. Kraus. We had no weather-related incidents.
So, but we were ready.
Pardon?
But we were ready.
We actually staffed up on, we started looking at the weather patterns, the red flags. The fire chiefs in the county requested some strike teams, pre-positioned strike teams. And strike teams, for people that don't know, it's five engines of the same kind. We ended up getting that strike team approved. Calistoga was assigned two engines, so we had our extra staff, we staffed up. We normally have one engine staffed during the day and then in the evening, and we ended up having four to five engines staffed. And like city manager Kern said, we, on an hourly basis, was patrolling all the areas of town, specifically the areas that were dark, Rancho being one of them. We paid a lot of attention, like we always do, to that facility. We also had regular weather checks. We have a weather expert on our department and actually sent him out to these key locations to make sure the wind speeds that were reported were actually true. So we only, we had, towards the end, we had some public services assist, oxygen tanks that were empty. People needed help doing that, and I'd like to say the charging station was used quite a bit this time. The first P S P S we had, it wasn't used at all. So those were good things to have in place. And as city manager Kern said, we participated, I wanted to bring this. This is a file I printed out today of all the emails, text messages, weather reports, everything that we participated in. It's almost a whole remit paper. So we were very active in the conference calls and keeping up on the weather and what the county was doing and what was going on around us.
Thank you.
On the weather, I would like to add that if, and chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the highest winds that were recorded during the event were on Mount St. Helena, seventy-seven miles an hour throughout the whole state. So we were ready, and, you know, it was eerie that it was almost two years to the day, and that was what was scary.
Mr. Lai, Chief of Police. So there weren't any specific emergencies directed that were weather-related. We did not staff up. We kept our normal staffing, given that we had additional public work staff and additional fire staff. My on-duty staff did conduct hourly and routine checks of the dark areas as well as the rest of the city. We were during this period requested by the Napa County E O C through the Public Health Department to make wellness checks for residents both in and outside the city of Calistoga. It was a little bit more than a dozen. We did receive a few calls, not a lot, but a few calls from outside the area to do wellness checks for individuals that were either seniors or had some medical issues just to make sure because they hadn't heard from relatives, and so we did some of those checks. As far as, and the Nixols, that was another thing, is that my staff probably took an onslaught of most of the phone calls. That was what's challenging. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said about the frustration of communication from PG&E. But we did our best to put Nixols out on behalf of the superintendent regarding the schools. We did it as far as sharing with the community as far as what we knew at the time, what the power, when the power was going to come back on, and it obviously kept changing as far as going off and coming on. So I think we weathered the potential storm pretty well, and we were prepared. Napa County had an additional deputy in our area. They staffed up the county. One was dedicated to us. So in addition to my staffing, we had a deputy there to respond to any issues that may have come up.
What kind of call volume did you get there? Was it? I realize you did your best with Nixel and what we had to communicate, but would you say the number of calls that were received at dispatch was, what, ten percent more than you would normally get a day, twenty? You know, what, double?
I would say probably close to double. I think that, because we were getting a lot of business calls, you know. Everybody wanted to know if we had.
I got some of the overflow at my house, but yeah.
Well, the expectation is that we had more information than the public was getting, and unfortunately, frankly, we did not. I mean, we participated, the fire chief participated in the daily briefings. I participated in the 10 o'clock briefings with the mutual aid agencies. Those were most informative and probably got most information as far as, you know, what was going on at the time. But even then, they were relying on the lack of information that we're getting from PG&E.
Other council members' questions? Your interaction between your respective colleagues from the county, communication and support from them, mutual aid, you found that to be satisfactory? I know you were interacting.
Greatly improved over the past incidents that we had.
Yeah, exactly. From the law enforcement partners, the lieutenant in charge of this area was outreach to me via texting and calls, and so he was able to provide, share the additional resources if we needed them.
From an elected standpoint, we did have, I was reached out to multiple times over that period of time by our board of supervisors as well. So there was certainly interaction between county staff and city staff. So unfortunately, we're all getting the hang of this, the more of these that happen. Anyone in the public with any questions?
I want to thank the gentlemen for being ready to defend our town against this kind of emergency. Appreciate it.
Thank you. City manager?
So going back to something that council member Kraus mentioned, when the county opened their E O C, the four of us had conversations about whether or not we should open ours. What we did was a soft opening, so we had all of the equipment, the tables, everything ready to go. And the only thing we didn't have was the books on the table and the paperwork there, but we knew that that was a a five-minute or fifteen-minute exercise versus a three-hour get it all set up. So Stephen has accrued, did a great job getting everything prepped in the event that we needed it. We're ready.
No, I concur with the operations we had here. My comments earlier in the meeting were more directed towards the county and the county's coordination with PG&E and PG&E's inability to communicate with us. I hope that is what came through. I'm sure that had an incident start to develop in town, that the E O C would have been brought up to its necessary status.
It would have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will thank you and thank your respective team members for all they did during that period as well.
Thank you.
With that said, we'll adjourn this evening's meeting to our next regularly scheduled. Oh, yeah, don't we? Do you want these one at a time? All right, we'll entertain a motion on the resolutions, one to open and one to close the emergency action as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Kraus, a second by, do you guys want to flip a coin on that? Council member Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting November 5th at 6:00 PM. Thank you all. Have a safe evening.